Welcome to Queen Anne's County Board Education Work Session for July 14, 2021. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. President, pursuant to the general provisions of Article 3-305 and 3-104, I do move the Board to meeting in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointed employees over whom this public body is jurisdiction and/or to perform an administrative function and/or to consult with council.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back at 5:00. July 14, 2021. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have anybody had a chance to look at our closed minutes, open minutes, or did open session minutes from July 7? Have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes from July 7.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. You also had a chance to look at our closed session meetings for July 7, 2021.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for the closed session July 7.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, if I say and say an aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the agenda. No motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'd like to recognize our student board members from last year.
Yes, we have one with us today, and Ms. Alexa Gross, we would like for her to come up. And her proud mommy is with her, and we thank her for being here too and for raising such a great student. Now, I'm understanding that you never had a chance to actually sit up here.
No.
So, come have a seat up here. Just have a seat up here.
Sit in the center.
Just in the center. With a very unique ear.
She's going to sit in there.
Just have a seat. It's fine. Wherever you want to sit.
Right there.
Just look out. There you go. Everybody get a picture of you.
There we go.
Okay. There you go. So, we wanted to present you with these flowers and say thank you so much for your year of service. We know it was the most challenging year. We appreciate it. We completely appreciate you staying in there and doing what you needed to do to get the job done. And share a lot about your character and who you are, and we wish you the best of luck in your next adventure.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you for staying late with us some nights here. She was here with us. Thank you for everything, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, Mom, come on up, Mom. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
We will have new board members coming that we're not able to attend tonight for our board meetings in the future.
Yes, so Mr. Brett Pfeifer from Queen Anne's County High School and Mr. Jackson Park from Kent Island High School. They both have big shoes to fill after that most challenging year next year, but I know that they're up for the challenge, and I look forward to meeting them both in person.
Next, this is for information item. Carl, I guess, and Clay.
Good evening, President Smith, members of the Board, and Dr. Salins. My name is Carla Polin. I'm the facilities planner, Queen Anne's County Public Schools, and I'm here with you this evening to bring you and the public up to date on our most recent discussions regarding the clay target team at Kent Island High School. So, as a member of the U.S. Clay Target League, the schedule that we will plan to compete in will be for the spring sports season. Registration typically happens through February and then practices and competitions, not until April. So, the proposed timeline that we're looking at is not until next spring season. This is good. We hope that we're well ahead of the timeline this year. It'll give the coaches the necessary time to advertise, to prepare, and to get some fundraising done, if it's necessary. We have had some calls, hoping that this would be a fall sport, but based on the U.S. Clay Target League schedule, it is something we'll be participating in in the spring. So, we wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. To participate with the U.S. Clay Target League and their competitive program, we have to be affiliated with a specific school. Just so everyone understands, that's the reasoning behind the team and being specific to Kent Island High School. We have to have a sponsoring high school to participate in this program. In talking with Dr. Salins about the clay target team, we discussed the possibility of formatting this first year of the program as a pilot program. So, U.S. Clay Target League recommends that we do one instructor to every 10 students. So, an idea would be to pilot this first year with 10 students. We would see the availability of our coaching staff going forward and then the student interest and see what that looked like for the following year. So, that was one idea that has been floated. To move forward, our department would benefit from some discussion and guidance for the best way to structure this team going forward. So, option number one, if we structure the U.S. or the clay target team at Kent Island High School as an extracurricular activity, this would be along the lines of mountain biking, of equestrian, of our sailing program. This is where the coaching staff are on a volunteer basis. They are not necessarily employees of Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Then, our insurance carrier, MAB, has strongly suggested that we try to develop an MOU between Queen Anne's County Public Schools and the U.S. Clay Target League, because this would assure that we knew the roles and the responsibilities of the league, the roles and the responsibilities of the school. We reached out to the U.S. Clay Target League, and they indicated that that is not something that they do with any other school system, that it usually, that agreement is between the school and the coaching staff. So, the result of that, in the event that we would have any type of incurrence, innately some of the liability would fall to the coaching staff. So, what we would recommend, if this indeed is an extracurricular activity, is that we require the coaches to hold some personal liability insurance as well, with a minimum coverage of $1 million. And we do have a draft of a coaches' agreement that would give us an idea of how that would look. The second option is if the clay target team is deemed an official sport at Kent Island High School, then the coaching staff would be paid coaches of the district. They would be employees of the district. MAB, in speaking with them, since they are insurance carrier, they had a preference for this model, because then they felt all of the staff would be covered under the board There's also a tort cap that is a benefit to the school system that the coaches would be covered under as well. So, that's part of their rationale. So, in this scenario, we would not require an MOU for coaches. We would not require any type of waiver of responsibility from parents, because this would be a school-sponsored activity. The outcome here is that we would need some additional funds to the athletics operating budget to cover the paid coaching staff, to cover transportation, which we do for all of our other sports for the high schools, and we would need to look at just some small costs for practices and competitions. There's a possibility that we would need to also look at providing some of the equipment, such as the guns and the ammunition, for those that didn't have it if, in the event, they needed that. So, that's one of the logistics that would have to be figured out in the event that this is an official sport. So, that's why we wanted to bring this up for discussion and review and just tell you and the public where we were at this point.
The idea of owning, the system owning a gun, can the coaches and them have, could they have their, could they lend guns to?
That's a possibility. That's a possibility, and we would have to figure out where they came from and how we assured that they were in good working order. But that's definitely a possibility, and I think that's something that the coaches have floated as well, that there are, there's equipment that can be borrowed for the program.
What are we talking, this cost per year to put this? I mean, I know we love the transportation, this and that, and, I mean, we talking, have we got any estimate or what?
For coaching staff, we would probably be, depending on how this is structured, again, it would differ. It's probably in the area of about $1,800 to $3,500, depending on if it's a head coach, if it's how we deem the coaching staff. It would also depend on number of students as well as number of coaches. If we started with the pilot program that we mentioned, we would only be looking at 10 students for the first year and one coach. So, we would anticipate that the cost would be pretty low as well. There's a very good chance that transportation would be something that the students would want to provide for themselves. Lots of the competitions happen on Saturdays, and so therefore, there may be a lot of parent involvement as well. With a pilot program, I couldn't anticipate the cost would be too high, and the team has indicated that they're willing to do some fundraising as well, that potentially could cover some of those costs.
Well, you said that the coaches were more amenable to the first option, right? Being an extracurricular sport and securing extra insurance coverage?
We have not had specific conversations with the coaching staff yet.
Okay.
We wanted to bring this to you first to see what some of the discussion and direction was.
Well, I do like the idea of it being a sport. I know I had indirect, I've had email conversations with the coaches just to get some more information. And, you know, 10, that's going to be tough, even as a pilot, because I know that when they sent out the informational piece, what has it been, a year and a half, two years now? I forget, there was 100 and something positive replies at the meeting. So, pilot, I can understand it, limiting it to 10 might be, you know, tough. But the other sports that we have, other than paying the coaches, do they, do we provide monies, or do they all do their fundraising?
They all do their own fundraising. So, those that are extracurricular activities do it on their own. It's not something, we don't provide transportation for them, we don't provide equipment for them.
Yeah, well, I think it's great to, I would want to personally, would want it labeled a sport. Certainly don't mind pilot, but would like to open it up to maybe 20. I know they had at least three people that were interested in coaching, and if it's, you're talking 3,500 maybe, I'm just throwing the numbers out, 3,500 for head coach and 2,000 each for two assistants. That's pretty minimal outlay for another sport, but I think it's great. It's, I'm excited about seeing how they do.
This is open, even though we're saying Kent Island, this is open up both to the whole county?
Yes. Yes. It would be open to our high school students.
Just high schools?
Correct.
So, it'd only open to high school, ninth, 12th grade?
Yes, because it's a ninth through 12th grade program through U.S. Clay Target League.
I think they shoot up in northern part of the county at the speed range.
Yes.
But it would be open to everybody. Have the coaches gotten, I mean, I like the idea of a pilot, getting their feet in there and doing it in a very orderly manner, but also don't want to, if there's 100 and we're only doing 10, that's a pretty wide gap. If there's 15 and we're doing 10, but if there's 30 or 40, I don't, I would just like to be, because I think you have to build it up to do that. That would be my one concern.
We could certainly survey to get a better idea of how many would want to participate and then try to modify that as appropriate.
And this, and you're telling me it starts, their program starts officially in the spring. That's when they have their competition?
Yes.
Can they work, and I know what the question's going to come up, but we want to start meeting and doing something in the fall. Where does that fall into?
We'll have to talk with U.S. Clay Target League about the logistics there. As with any other sport, I'm sure there are parameters of outside of the season play. So, we'll have to look into that. I don't know the answer offhand as to how far ahead of time they're able to start practicing.
And I don't know where this generated from, but I do know, you know, you have the Skeet Club in Sundersville and a trap, trap range up at a couple places. Some of them might already be shooting there now, but I don't know, you know, what's allowed as far as organized for that and stuff. That would be my.
Yes.
Talk to the, who's, there's one gem.
Connolly.
Sean Connolly.
Mr. Connolly.
Have we been strict in touch with him just to see where we are too?
No, not in recent months. I have not. We're kind of waiting on this direction to get some feedback from him as to, if we know that this is an extracurricular activity, the conversation will go along one way.
An extracurricular, he has to have insurance. The other one, it's under our.
We would provide that. He would be an employee.
We would provide that, like we do other things, and then we have like the tort thing, which limits the liability on that.
Yes.
Personally, that sounds like a better way.
Right.
If it's a sport, you mean?
Yes.
Why do we choose Kent Island and not Queen Anne's, since most of the trap places are up north?
That was the preference of the coach, and that was the desire. He had already reached out to Mr. Schreckengast, principal at the time, and Mr. Harding, the athletic director, and had some conversations about that. And both of them had also indicated that they would be in support. They do need a school sign-off, so the principal of the school has to give their approval to this program. And so, I believe that's where it came from, that they would be the sponsoring school.
So, here's my concerns. If this is a sport, we need a hard and fast budget to look at, because of course, we've already settled our budget for next year that doesn't include this sport. So, not only you have coaches' fees, you have transportation fees. Each, each team gets a budget from the school system, does it not?
That's correct.
So, that needs to be figured, which of course, right now, we don't have this money.
Right.
So, I'd like to see a hard budget to look at the numbers, if it's even possible.
And frankly, I'm more inclined to, you know, have it as an extracurricular activity. That's kind of how it was promoted when Mr. Connolly first came in. I think he came in twice to present it. You know, obviously with the implication that the school was not going to budget any of it, and it would all be on donations and fundraising and that kind of thing. And that fundraising could still pay for the, for the, you know, principal and an insurance policy as well to cover those costs.
Yes.
I'm not so sure, but I think the cap, I guess, wouldn't fit in there, because it wouldn't be part of that school system.
Right.
So, that would be, obviously, be up to the coaches to decide if they want to accept that liability. MAB's recommendation of 1 million.
Exactly. And that's why we were hoping for a little bit of direction, because these are some of the conversations that we want to have with Mr. Connolly, just, you know, so he understands the pros and cons.
And as a sport, which you mentioned earlier, is, you know, if we're going to be buying guns and ammo, that's probably not something that I would be recommending.
Out of curiosity, if we did it a sport and we didn't have it in the budget, would their fundraising, could they use their fundraising to pay for their coaches as well?
I don't think that would be equitable. I think we could have some concerns there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we would create some inequities through the district, and then that could be concerning.
Could we do the pilot? Would it be possible to do a pilot as an extracurricular, and if it does well, then put it into our budget as a sport the following year?
Just look at that option, sure.
And have them volunteer the first year, coaches?
They would have to have that.
And but we could fundraise for their insurance policies. Is that correct? That would not be an issue?
And uniforms.
I think you'd have a lot of organizations that would probably donate and stuff like that, because I've heard some, some things about that. My biggest concern is this insurance thing, a million dollars, you know, it's, what's that going to be?
We estimated $300 to $400 for a yearly policy.
Too bad. I have a question about borrowing guns. Who's liable, if we have borrowed the equipment from, say, a local person who's volunteered to help? I mean, does it fall under the school policy? Does it fall under the MOU? Does it fall, does it fall under the individual that loaned the gun? We don't know if that gun is in.
Are we loaning guns? I thought the school, if we purchased some of the equipment, because that's all it would be, just like we do the football equipment, I thought that's what you meant, that we would be purchasing it and we would be loaning it to the students who are participating. You were not talking that? You were talking borrowing a gun from just a?
There is. So, as a extracurricular activity, what Mr. Connolly has indicated is through some of the other leads that they participate in, there are firearms that are available for use for students who don't have them or to try them out beforehand before they're purchasing something, to know that they're purchasing the right thing. If this is indeed a sport, then in terms of the equity issue, we do provide soccer balls. We do provide, you know, lacrosse sticks for those that don't have that. Many choose to bring their own, many choose to purchase their own and use those instead. But as an entity of the school system, we would have to be responsible for that. It also begs the question, if they're owned by Queen Anne's County Public Schools, where are they stored? How are they transported? Because they can't.
Are we allowed? Are we allowed to purchase firearms?
Well, if it's an extracurricular activity, we wouldn't be, number one. But a lot of the, if it's a sport, yeah. So, again, it's, it's so much more complicated if we try to turn this into a sport or label it as a sport or adopt it as a sport than as an extracurricular activity. And she had a good point. Let's try it as an extracurricular at least, you know, one or two years and see how it goes, if the interest is still there and that sort of thing. As far as the guns go, a lot of the ranges do have their own range guns, you know, that the kids can use and that kind of stuff. And again, as an extracurricular activity, and the way it was presented was that the students would be providing their own guns. I think Washington College has offered to provide all the ammunition.
Nice. And it would definitely, I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to cut you off. And certainly, every other school, firearms, it's not just here, that firearms are not necessarily allowed on campus. So, there must be other schools in, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these programs in public schools. So, I would think that we could probably reach out to a couple of them to see how they handle storing it. We have plenty of time if we do the extracurricular pilot first and then get all this stuff together before moving it into the sport realm.
Yes, and we had reached out to a number of different states. So, Maryland does not have any other public school that participates, only private schools, as you know. We reached out to some schools in Virginia, some in Pennsylvania. I did hear back from one school in Pennsylvania who spoke very highly of the program. We didn't discuss specifics on what they do with their firearms, but it is an extracurricular activity there. It's not one of their approved sports.
So, if this is an extracurricular, will it only be offered to the one school or it will still be open to both?
It would still be offered to both. It just has to be registered under one home school per the league.
Just like the sailing club. I mean, the sailing, it's open to both schools.
I think it's ninth grade.
They use a private, they use a private sailboat for it.
Ninth grade through 12th grade.
Okay.
Well, it's, I mean, to me, it sounds like the pilot program to start off with. Extracurricular activity would be the point where it would be a good way to start it off, to see what traction we get and where we go to the next step if that's, it does happen. The insurance, I think, needs to be, those couple things that we require these coaches to have, needs to be addressed upfront, so either we can make sure, we have to make sure they have adequate insurance, but they can make sure that they can pay the premiums. And then, and that would be my feeling, to move it forward that way.
Can we vote to move forward? I'm sorry, Mark, what were you going to say?
Can we vote? Or just to give you a clear indication?
To give us a clear picture.
With the five of us, and of course, the superintendent are recommending. So, I would say that we start with an extracurricular activity, you know, call it that and, or adopt it as that. And as far as a pilot program, I'm flexible with whatever anybody else is.
I think we have a good direction now, and that's why it was kind of an informational item, just to see where we were at this time and get some direction. And I think we have a good direction now, so we can continue to work on it and come back to the board with some additional information as it relates to the coaches and them having their own insurance and what that looks like, costs of that and everything. And that, I think, would eliminate a lot of the other concerns that we do have.
Right. Reach out to Mr. Connolly.
Yes, we can talk directly with him, tell him what some of the parameters will be, you know, gauge his concerns, get some feedback from him.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Salins, may I introduce?
Yes, absolutely. This is Dr. Salins.
Hello.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
And we're glad that you were able to attend tonight. We did kind of already get to that part of the agenda, but I'm looking forward to you taking that seat and being here on a regular basis with us, engaging in conversation for the benefit of all the students that you represent.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. So, introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. I'm Brett Pfeifer. I'm from Queen Anne's County. I'm a senior, I'm a senior going, going into a senior as a Queen Anne's County. I do cross-country and track. It'll be my fourth year for each of them. And I'm on the National Honor Society, and that's a.
That's awesome. That's a lot. Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Are you with student government as well?
No, I haven't gone into student government.
Okay. That's a good pre. Thank you. Have you started your college searches?
Yeah.
Getting all your applications ready for the fall?
Right now, I'm interested in around St. Mary's and University of St. Mary's.
Nice. That's awesome. Very good. Well, welcome to CD.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Mrs. Bennett, Mr. Schifinelli, Mr. Smith, Ms. Morsette?
Hello.
Everybody here? And you meet all the executive team?
They're from Bata.
Yeah, Alexis.
Not really, but.
Can you come up and get a picture of the members? Do you like to, newspapers here like to take a picture of you, and would you like to come up and like to do?
Alexis. Alexis. While she's still here. Come here to again. Come on up, Brett. Come over here. Go over there. That's okay?
Speaking quite a day, my camera's dead, so we're just going to be working with the phone.
It works.
This technology is incredible. Just say.
You're tall, not in front. That's good. Get back here. Here, you want to step down one.
All right, everybody ready? A team. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Yes, don't go anywhere, Ray. Okay.
Awesome. So, you're going to generally like to propose?
Okay, Carla, 30-02, proposed central office building update.
Yes. So, I am here to talk to you now about the updates for the construction of a new central office building for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. As you might recall, we completed a feasibility study for the central office to determine if the renovation of this building or a new building would be the most efficient and economically responsible option. The result of that study showed that a new building is approximately $1 million cheaper than doing a renovation. Because of the age of this building, because of the setup of this building, even if we do a complete renovation here, there are going to be code issues that we just will not be able to solve. So, the proposed option is to build a new building. The proposed site is directly across the street from Queen Anne's County High School. It's situated on Vincent Street in the town of Centerville, and it's right in front of the new county building and the YMCA senior center site, which they just recently broke ground on. As part of the fiscal year 2022 budget, the county commissioners included $2 million for architectural and engineering planning and design services for a new central office building. So, based on that, we would like to begin preparing an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, which will be publicly advertised for solicitation for price proposals from interested architectural and engineering firms. We anticipate that the RFQ would be available in early August. We will take the submissions in, we'll review them first for the qualifications and for experience on like projects. Then we will have a committee that will shortlist three to five of the top firms based on those qualifications, and we'll ask them to submit price proposals. That committee then, which we would hope to include at least one member of the county commissioners and one member of the Board of Education, will take a look at both the qualified firms and their price proposal to make a determination. We would like to select that firm sometime in September or October and get working on the design right away. We anticipate that it would take to about, about six to nine months to do the design, the bidding process late next spring, and then we would be ready to break ground the beginning of fiscal year 2023. So that's next July 1st. The construction process would take us approximately a year. That's going to be necessary for us because the county is proposing to split the construction funding with half in fiscal year '23, beginning next July, and half the following year. So we do need to be able to have that construction process follow the timeline there. If we have no delays, the hope would then be to move into the new building late summer of 2023. So hopefully, right before the '23-'24 school year begins. Exciting.
Very exciting.
It is very exciting. You mentioned that there's $1 million cheaper to do a new one. So what is the total bill for, do we have?
It's a $14 million project is what was anticipated when the feasibility study was done. I will put the caveat to that, that we've seen some crazy increases in construction right now. We're certainly hoping that those come back down, but we'll be looking at that closely with the design. Along with that will come cost estimates, so we can make sure that we're in alignment with the funding that's been provided.
Will it go out to bid as a firm fixed, or will it be flexible?
Say that again.
Will it go out as a firm fixed? Once we award it, will it be a firm fixed price?
We would anticipate so. There are a couple of different ways that we could do this. The firm fixed would be probably through a general contract. We could also look at construction management at risk, which basically allows a construction company to work with us while we design it to identify if there is going to be anything that costs a lot more or if there's anything that is inappropriate in the design and isn't easy to actually construct in the field. There are a couple of different ways that we can take a look at that. And as we're doing the design, we're going to keep those in mind, too.
Yeah, a little history. Callan High School was done with construction management. A firm called Donahue did that. Had a great guy that ran the train. I mean, he did it right. I think we got a lot of value for that. That worked out well. But it also can bite you in the butt if things go wrong because you don't have that fixed cost. It all depends on who you get. But it's, there's two avenues of that and, you know.
So when we did Stevensville Middle School, our projected budget at that time was 18 million, and we went to 26, almost 26 million.
With construction management.
Because it was, again, we've had so many hidden surprises in that building to begin with.
And all was new, and you know, when you do renovation.
And I was right, so newer is easier.
With the, just because, you know, when we say that the prices have come down a little bit, where you're talking like from $10 to $9 for two by four, when it used to be $2 not that long ago. Would there be any, like, way for a bonus, like if they come in under budget? Because I would hope that it's going to continue to keep coming down, so that by the time they actually go to start constructing, you know, you hope that you're saving a little bit more on your building materials.
Yes. Not necessarily incentive. There are a couple of different factors at play here. So construction management that was done with some of our prior projects, the process has changed a little bit, and now we use what is construction management at risk. So essentially, we don't hold the contracts anymore. The contractor does, and they give us that firm fixed price. But we get some of the benefits of having them along throughout the entire process. The other part of that is that what we typically do is that we build in alternates into the contract. So that, let's say, we have a budget of 14 million. It only comes in at 13. So then we're able to add on maybe an upgraded finish, or we're able to add a little bit more square footage. And so we build provisions into the design documents so that if we do have problems, there is an easy way to back off of either the size of the building or the construction of the building. If we see a surplus once the bids come in, then we're able to add some of those features that we'd like to get back into the project.
And I know that a few years ago, and Dick, you probably know more, the county went to where, I don't know if we have any companies of that size in Queen Anne's County, but there was a, there was a bonus, you got like bonus points when you bid on a job. Are you familiar with it? Is that something that we do?
Yeah, but what we found, most of our local businesses aren't capable of handling something that big or even get bonded for something that big.
If they did, would they still get?
They, I mean, you know, like the electric and the HAVC, we've had some local people, especially out of the Eastern, have bid on stuff, but.
There was a few subcontractors.
It's tough for anybody in our county to be competitive and/or be able to be bonded for the levels that we would require, from what I've seen.
And the benefit that we have is that this is a county-only funded project, so we aren't under some of the parameters that the state funding puts onto us. So it does allow us a little bit more flexibility of the geographic location and the makeup of the contractors that we solicit.
And the commissioners have been fully warned that this building goes back to them.
We've had several conversations that that is what happens by law, that this then becomes, it's deeded back to the county.
We were in this room when we handed Southersville Middle School back, and Steve Ernst, we gradually took the paper.
Do they have the land, too? Is it the land or is it just the building?
Land and building.
County of the county.
I mean, I've brought it up before. We got the central middle school project going. There could be some possible uses there. This building, I know renovation's tough, but then also, I think, but Tammy says there's going to be some real issues with this building once we move out of it. I mean, it might cost $1 million more to renovate it, but it's going to cost probably $3 million to tear it down. And that's just a number I'm picking out of the sky. But, you know, if we don't want it, nobody else is going to want it. So I have real problems right now going with a new building. I do. I know, I know we need one. And this is, this is our one building of all our high, our schools that is the most in need by far, but.
Well, Mr. Smith, it's nice that the county commissioners understand that the full bill falls on them. There's no state money to this. So it's nice that they are putting it into their budget.
It is very nice of them. But it's also as citizens and other people, we have to find out what we're going to do with it. And, you know, I just, I don't think enough thought went into some other options, but that's just me.
I'm sure the Historical Society will have something to say.
It is an old building. There is some historic significance to it. Not that you couldn't, you know, shave it down maybe and save a piece and, or do something with it.
I've talked to some of the alumni, which in '66 was the last one. You know, the cupola got, which I know it's fallen apart, got put over there or something designed it. That might be a little softening, but what you still got a building that sits on five or six acres that's useless.
And what do we do with Arise? Does Arise go with the new building, or does Arise go to one of the high schools?
That was my idea with the middle school.
That's a question that has to be addressed.
And it is a question that needs to be addressed because of the design of the building. If you put students as, you know, being participants in that building, it's different. The regulations, requirements and restrictions are very different when you have students involved than just an adult building. So that's something that we really need to talk about. Because I think there was also some thinking of maybe culinary arts-type students, you know, participating, you know, having some part of the building. And so that's something I think we really need to discuss, and we haven't had an opportunity to do that yet.
Because then again, it would fall under the state if we were going to have students attached to the building.
Exactly. And I'm looking, Carly, she's definitely an expert in that, and I don't want to misspeak. But definitely, there are absolutely different guidelines when you have students involved.
Now, if I remember correctly, the four plans we were shown did include Arise.
We did include them. They are included in the square footage studies that we have done. Again, it was just a very high-level look at what the potential could be for including them. But again, it falls back to, you know, a lot of questions with curriculum and what do we anticipate for that program? What are the numbers that we would like to see out of that program? What CTE programs could we potentially incorporate? What other community functions could we potentially incorporate?
Didn't we look at maybe a large auditorium room added to that?
There's a possibility.
Those two auditoriums are not big enough for a large gathering.
Square footage for that was not included. I don't believe the site would allow for something that would give us a venue for graduation or something like that. Yeah, unfortunately.
I think that's where, I mean, my personal, it's where the middle school could come play in because you build a new middle school back there, and the middle school could be utilized for some things of that nature if that was incorporated. But I know the commissioners, or at least the majority of them, are heavily pushing a new building for some reason at the Vincent Center.
And one of the difficulties that we know off the top with utilizing Centerville Middle School for a new building as well as the existing building is that we lose out on play fields. And that's one of the things that the state's very concerned about. The site just doesn't support enough room to have two fully working buildings plus all of the necessary parking plus the play sites. So it's something that we've definitely had discussions about and how that building could be utilized. It's also a 42-year-old building as well and has many of the same challenges we see here. We don't have proper ADA compliance at this point. We need fully renovated plumbing systems, electrical systems, lighting systems, interior finishes.
Ms. Pullman, we talked about relocating the Soul City solar panels. That would give more space for the playing fields at Centerville Middle.
There, beside Centerville Middle and on the Queen Anne's County.
I'm sure there's other, I mean, there's plenty of other land around.
We're 14 years in that lease, so it's getting to the point where it almost could be bought out.
Correct. We are.
Is that wetlands? Because it's pretty low.
It's, it's very close to a stream.
Yeah, right behind it.
Behind it, yes.
It's just going to be like a flood zone certain field seasons.
I think that's why we, when we did the Soul City contract years ago, that's why we went ahead and put them there is because of.
Can't use it for my.
Can't use it for anything else. Now, the stream back there, they've already been talking about that, what they were going to do with it. Some other things to bring up. More logistics.
For sure.
So, I mean, what are they asking us to do, less this or?
At this point, they have not requested that we do anything. It's, it's money that has been afforded in the fiscal year budget for '22, and they have asked how quickly we could get it done.
So they're asking us to do this, spend $2 million on some market check drawings and stuff for this building on a bits of property?
Yes.
So they're asking us to ask to move this project forward?
Yes. And have indicated that they are putting the funding in for construction, $7.5 million in both of the next fiscal years toward this project.
Tonight is just an informational item. So we think on this.
I asked you to put it on there just because I'd ask for information.
Isn't it normally 10% for the design?
Five for art.
So we're, so we're asking for, of a $14 million building, we're asking for about 15% for the design? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? If we're asking.
We've seen for most of our A&E fees, we are closer to 10%. Again, once we narrow down those RFQs, then we submit the price proposals, and that's where we have some flexibility in looking if we're between the 7% and 10% that we expect that we would be for those fees. What we've asked for with some more on the front is for upfront testing, anything that we need to do to get the site ready before construction, some work that could happen prior to actually breaking ground.
So grading.
Yes.
Yeah, they're considered a soft call, so not included in the Berks and Morder, basically.
Right. Yes.
And that could go up to $1 million, depending on how much at the site requires.
The commissioners did not request for those to go on the agenda. I requested it because I wanted information because I feel like I was about to speed on.
We also have to hook up to sewer and water and everything else in town.
Correct.
We have to contact the town.
Lots of conversations with the town of Centerville. We have already met with their planning commission as part of the feasibility study just to give them an idea of what was potentially being proposed. We got some feedback from them, but there'll be a lot of conversations that need to happen in planning with them as well.
Okay. So expected to come back on the agenda, obviously.
Thank you.
Just for information, trying to get everybody up to speed and knowing what's going on. I, you know, as I said, I specifically asked and requested to have an update, and since I didn't know any of it and felt like, oh, maybe, I didn't know how much the board did or didn't know, so I'm glad that.
It's in our capital budget this year.
Yes.
And, you know, they've approved that. Which direction we go, I guess, has to be very clear.
Yes. Thank you so much, Carla.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing is technology.
Yes. Josh here. Come on up.
Good evening, board. Dr. Salins, my name is Josh Combs. I'm the supervisor of technology for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. I have a couple of annual contract renewals to ask for approval.
Especially while you're doing that, did we have, we got our gig bite or whatever we were supposed to get moved up?
Yes, we did.
So we're at high capacity now and.
Yeah, we basically quadrupled almost what we had before we, from last year.
Baltimore is coming down where it is.
Yes, yeah, it's already, it's already enabled and active, yep.
Is it helping any of the hotspots that we gave out?
Completely separate.
Totally separate?
Yeah, yeah, that's Verizon Wireless versus our own internal network.
Do we have any of the, not to digress, but do we have any of those back? Are we still using them, or what are we doing with them?
We asked the schools to collect them, except for the kids that need them.
I know you didn't come in to talk about that, but it's just, it's all technology.
I have an answer.
Right.
So they collected them except for the kids that needed them for summer school. So, you know, we have 100, 150 devices still out there that are being used there for summer school. So, you know, there's still a need. So we definitely lowered it from what we needed as of a couple of months ago.
I just had a question about the, so is this, the websites, it's for the schools' websites as well as a QACPS website?
Yes, it's one subscription, Blackboard. So all of our websites are hosted. So when you go to WQACPS.org, that's Blackboard, and then all the sites are underneath of that. So, yeah, it's all one online content management system.
How many are we talking on the websites that they're?
Basically, we have our main website and the 14 schools.
Hey, just for everybody's clarification, we're talking about Blackboard web hosting first. That's the first we're going to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I did want to let the board know that I specifically had a conversation because we will be having another item, it's out right now, gathering some RFPs to redesign the website. And so that's actually going to be coming in August. And one might say, why are you going to approve this now if you're going to go ahead and move forward with another contract to develop a new website? But it's because this hosts all of them, and so we won't be able to do them all at one time. Obviously, it takes a pretty long time to do the first one.
Just move the content.
Right, right. And so it takes a while to do the first one, and then the other ones will come easier after the first one's done. But likely, that timeline will be two years for all the schools.
This also includes all the teacher webpages. If a teacher wants to create a webpage, this is where they would do it underneath of the school.
That's why you'll see that. I don't want you to get confused.
Their whole system.
Right, exactly.
It's basically everything that would be.
Unfortunately, they're going to have to parallel for a period of time until we can fully move over to the new, is what I'm suggesting.
When we use this last year?
Yes, sir.
Did we do it just on a one-year contract?
Yes, sir.
So it's just, and about the same, I mean, cost-wise, about the same as last year?
Yeah, normally with common subscriptions, I see between a 3% to 5% increase per year is what you're going to see, and this isn't in line with the 3% increase you see normally on yearly subscriptions.
Did we bid this out or, I mean, I know we've been using them, so it's probably advantage to keep.
Yeah, honestly, this was in place for a long time. I couldn't tell you, it's, we've been using it for quite a few years. I don't know what if it was bid it or how it was decided on why we went this route versus, say, another route. I can tell you, at one time, we were on something called School Wires. That's how long ago it was, and then it got bought by Blackboard. So that's how long we've had it, where there was even a transition of a buyout from the company we had previously.
2012, School Wires.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's okay.
2013.
Does it enter the terms for number two, that it's an auto renewal unless it's, unless it says something different in the terms? So is this an automatic renewal every year? Or do we have it somewhere where we're reviewing this each year? I'm just curious.
It's still, it's still a yearly contract. We can still cancel it. I think it's kind of one of those things where you have to give them 30-day notice in writing that you're going to cancel it, because they, they basically bring them every year, but they can't invoice us until we do a purchase where. So, yes, they still can't charge us for it automatically. It's not like, you know.
Is there some reason we have that in there then? Okay, okay.
We can get out of it when we're ready to switch over to a new platform.
And likely, we'll have to reduce it next year because they'll still have to post some.
Yes, we pay per site.
Yeah.
So say you moved the four, or the four middle schools.
Right.
We could remove the four middle schools, lower the number of sites with Blackboard, go to a different platform, so.
That'll be a two-year process.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? I have a.
You want to do the next one for the Power School enrollment?
You want to just, you want to approve each one separately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a purchase for a Blackboard, purchased Blackboard web serving for $39,155.95. That's a fiscal impact, and budget source is FY '22 Technology Software Licensing Budget.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, 5-0. Okay, next one I've got is Power School. Is that what you're with? Okay.
There are two for Power School, so basically two different modules. The first one is enrollment registration. In best, we call it back-to-school forms. It's where you, new students do online registration or returning students to online registration, that is the platform. So that's where they answer all the questions. They upload all their data. That's how the information gets into Power School electronically. You know, things get checked off and approved and stuff like that. So that's, we've been using it for a few years, I think about four years. It's been really successful. I think other counties are starting to adopt electronic registration, but it's been working really, really well for us, especially when it comes to like medical information and making sure you got the proper contact information. That's where we get this information from, from the parents. It's also another one that we've, like I said, it's an annual renewal.
So you're saying with the first one that it's mostly the back-to-school forms, the registration?
Yes.
Then what is the?
The Power School SIS, that is Power School itself. That is our student information system. That's where all of our data, health, attendance.
Grades.
Yeah, the main, it's called MMS, which is just made to support. It's basically licensing. We pay for an extra service, so we get automatic updates for appliance. We back up all of our data off-site for an entire year. Every day it gets backed up for an entire year. If for some reason it was go down, we can spin up and be up within four hours. When a, like, from Azure or like another platform, it was an emergency, so we pay for this. It's such an important product for everyone when it comes to the administration, so we, everything's in there, so.
Just curiosity, do they back it up or do we back it up?
They back it up every night. I back it up as well because I'm paranoid, so I back it up as well. But yes, there is a task that runs on the server every night and it gets backed up off-site.
Off-site?
Yes.
But then you also back it up?
And then I also back it up every day.
We pay for that storage somewhere else, correct?
It's like a service we pay for automatic updates, off-site service, emergency spin-up in case there was, we lost internet or something like that.
A two or three-year contract?
These are yearly contracts this year.
No, no, the storage unit, the storage site.
Oh, no, that's, that's something different. Yeah, 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 this is just included as part of the service.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to worry about the amount of storage.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Power School Enrollment Registration for $26,395.05. Fiscal impact and budget source FY '22 Technology Software Licensing Budget.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we just talked a little bit about Power School SIS. Any other questions on that?
I have a question.
Okay.
Last year, with Schoology, they're not talking to each other. Are we fixing that?
You're talking about grades?
Grades.
Power School and Schoology, they didn't talk last year.
You gotta jump to Power School to see what's been graded. You gotta jump back into Schoology to figure out what still has to be done. I know as a parent, I'm going back and forth trying to figure out what my child has been doing.
I know there's a lot of changes happening in August with Schoology. I don't know all of them because Julie handles and Michael were handling Schoology, but I do know when it comes to, for what I know about Schoology, like, you have to put in the grades a certain way in Schoology for them to show up on the grade book side. So if it's done properly, they are supposed to sync over. If you set up the correct templates in a way, in a, in grade a certain way, they're supposed to sync and talk to each other. I don't know how much improvement that is. I couldn't find out.
It sounds like professional development needs happen.
Yeah, and I know that Mrs. Houdock is meeting with the CNI team, the curriculum instruction team this week, and I know that's part of their agenda.
And I believe there's more training coming up and, or planning was for August to have more training with Schoology. I believe that was probably part of their contract to have to do that in August.
I just know it's a frustration, not only on the parent's side.
Oh, absolutely, I understand. You want to see everything in one, in one class of pain, you know?
And that's supposed to be one of the major benefits, is that it's a single sign on the parents and students. So it's something that we absolutely need to address, and we can certainly continue to provide the professional development necessary to make that happen.
Absolutely, it makes a lot of sense.
Is that done by each school or just overall? Do you have a professional development day?
Mrs. Houdock, do you know the answer to that? Is that done, did they do that at each school or was it by grade band for the Schoology professional development? Have they been doing it by individual schools?
They had Schoology specialists, like folks who could speak to it. So they were doing it at?
Individual schools?
Mm-hmm. Queen Anne's, there were two, and they were.
So she's saying every single school had its own reps and had somebody who was like a trainer?
So trainer, trainer model.
And then they would address it within the school building, not necessarily district-wide?
So some are very, just people putting information in?
Well, and I think probably COVID had a little bit to do with that, that they didn't do something district-wide, I'm assuming.
Right, right, and they were doing it virtually as well.
Yeah, so that might have had a little bit of a different approach than typical years prior to.
Well, as a parent, I can tell you, looking at from my son's end, he had teachers putting assignments on one way and teachers putting on assignments different ways. So he had to learn where to find the assignments, and then I had to learn how to find if he did the assignment and how it was graded, if it was graded. Then I had to jump over to Power School, so did he, to see if it was graded, to see if there was something else he had to turn in. It was just a little complicated.
Well, yeah, that's, that's not the way it's supposed to be. And likely because, I think a lot of factors, knowing that it was first year last year and knowing that the pandemic and what a difficult time to try to roll out a new product, essentially a new platform, I should say, for parents and for students. So something that we definitely, see Amy shaking her head over there, definitely need to continue to address because it absolutely has to be fixed. That's not what's in the best interest, so it's not good for the student or the parent. And thank you for bringing that up so we can continue to come back to it.
Okay, I got a Power School SIS for a purchase approval amount of $53,455.34. Fiscal impact, budget source FY '22 Technology Software Licensing Budget.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Else?
So moved, second.
First and second, any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, Microsoft licensing.
Last one, is exactly as it sounds. It's our Microsoft license for our Windows servers and our desktop clients and obviously Microsoft Office 2019 and so forth. So it's another yearly thing that's done through the MEAC contract through the state. It's kind of one of the things that we're, it's not really, we have to have it because it's a yearly thing. We're on our last year of guaranteed contract money. It'll change again next year while the state does co-op purchasing as all the counties. So we will see a new type of contract and pricing model next year, but as, this is the price, and this is like, they were nice because when we do these contracts, they guarantee only a 3% or 5% increase every single year. So you kind of can budget in advance, but, yeah, it's just, it's just licensing for all of our Microsoft products, which for us, we're Microsoft here, Windows, Microsoft on our desktops, so.
Just, is this based on our enrollment or?
Uh, yes, it's based on full-time equivalent for staff.
Full-time equivalent for staff?
Yes.
So our system here and Baltimore up here and?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So every county would have, would, like, yeah, you go to up here a county that, say, had 2,000 full-time employees, their cost would be, would be per employee cost.
So Josh, it's our annual contract, but with MEAC, they have a four-year contract.
Yeah, basically, it's a four, yes, it's a yearly contract. What they do is they give a four-year guaranteed pricing model, and right now it's based on full-time equivalent. Unfortunately, it sounds like they want to switch over to not only, they would get away from the full-time equivalent model, Microsoft, and they want to go to everyone, what they call full-time equivalent, what's called knowledge workers or light workers, people that only might come in three days a week, maybe a contractor, anybody that uses a system more than one day a week. They want to count that person. Maybe at different costs, but they kind of want to, they want everybody, it'd be different pricing structure for every single type of worker that you have under your command. It might be more, we're stepping here, we're obviously trying, like, we don't want to see something crazy. I mean, luckily, this is a statewide purchase for, and all the counties are involved, so.
We're all under same rules and regu, as far as the criteria, how we judge it and make it priced?
Yeah, organization MEAC is the one that negotiates this for all the counties. They do Microsoft, Adobe, they do hardware contracts, the state hardware contracts. It's a great organization.
Okay, I got a purchase in front of us for Microsoft licensing. Fiscal impact at $59,890.98 out of the '22 Technology Software Licensing Budget.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, anybody all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, executive team. For the record, my name is Jolene Smith. I'm the supervisor of special education, and I bring to you tonight several contracts related to special education. I believe the first one, and I'll open it up on here as well. So the first one is through Solian Health. It's for a speech pathologist in the amount of, oh.
Are we doing alphabet first?
Yeah.
Let's skip, that's okay, I mean.
What's she doing?
Yeah, sorry. Just skip, that's all right.
Oh, I don't care, I mean, she can't.
You're good, you're good.
All right, did I jump in front of somebody? Sorry. Yep, I did.
Oh, good.
It's okay.
We're going to say yes anyway, so just, okay, no, go ahead.
All right, I'll just jump in front. I think she's going to be this. Sorry, I was so excited to get up here tonight.
Are you going to start early?
Yeah.
Are you going to start with the speech part?
I am.
Okay.
So I'm just going to go right down the list that's on Board Ducks. So the first one is for Solian Health, and it's for a speech pathologist in the amount of $110,682.60. This is for a speech pathologist that covers Ken Island Elementary School full-time. That is her sole assignment, and she is there five days a week.
I just had a question. In the statement, it's saying we're having a hard time getting speech pathologists because other places are offering more. Is it okay to ask, how much are we offering a speech pathologist?
So the speech pathologists actually come in on our teacher pay scale. They don't have their own pay scale. When they come in, they, if they come in with all of their certifications, they enter on a master's level because they are master's prepared. So they would enter relative to their experience level. There is an additional stipend for speech pathologists that's written into the negotiated contract of an additional $1,000 each year that went into effect in 2020.
So what would that range be?
So I don't have the exact figure with me because, again, it's a range of numbers. I think that when I just did the research, they come in on a step four, and I want to say, I just sent this to you. I think it was like $46,000, maybe, right around there. Now, that does not include benefits. That's just the salary amount.
Okay.
But it is difficult. Again, you know, we are competing with neighboring districts as well, and there is a difference.
Are the neighboring districts paying more than $110,000?
Well, no, so this $110,000 accounts for a full year's worth of pay, and again, they're paying the benefits, which that initial amount that I provided does not include the benefits. There would be an additional 23% off of their salary plus $171 for life insurance. And then in addition to that, you would have your benefits, which if they came in as an individual would be around just a little over $7,000 for the individual, and for a family plan, it would be closer to $18,000.
Okay, and so the minimum hours is 35, I'm assuming that's per week?
Per week.
But the, she doesn't have to have a teaching certificate, he or she doesn't have to have a teaching certificate?
Speech pathologists are licensed through the Board of Health.
I think it's very well noted when we see this figure, you know, we're not talking any other benefits. I mean, just a contracted price. So when we see somebody and some of our teachers, and I think anybody, not teachers, anybody who works in business, you know, your salary can be not double, but can be another third to 40% more than what you really see.
Oh, no, I understand that. I was just wondering what the other, if we're not able to get a speech pathologist because other counties are paying more, I'm just wondering what those other counties are paying that, that are paying $110,000. Are they paying more than $110,000, like in Talbott or Kent?
And again, it depends on when, where they come in. Many of the applicant, we've actually only had three applicants in the past two years. One of them would have come in at a step nine. One of them would have come in, I believe, at a step, I don't remember the first one because it was so long ago. And then I just had a more recent applicant that was a 30-year SLP. And when you look at someone with 30 years' experience, they would come in at the top of our scale if we were to honor their years of experience, and it would well exceed this amount. But we're still always trying. You know, anytime that there is a direct applicant, the nice thing about a contract, for us, not for them, is that there are clauses written into the contracts that allow us to discontinue the contract should we be able to secure a direct hire. And it's always posted on our site, and we're always trying to secure those direct hires when it's physically responsible to do so.
Thank you.
Any other?
This speech pathologist, she says, is just one school?
This one is just one school. It is Ken Island Elementary School, and there is another full-time speech pathologist there. It's our prekated two school, and both of our schools have very high caseloads of speech-related students. They also serve itinerant services for students that are not yet school age or have not enrolled, so they provide services for that as well.
For the infant toddler?
Some of them, yes.
But like, when this contract, and you're saying it's for this one school, but under this contract, superintendent could assign them to somebody else, some of the schools, or is it just for this one school?
No, so when we sign the contract, should we need to change the location of the person, we have the flexibility to do that. They're signing a contract with Queen Anne's County, not particularly that school. I mean, they too have the ability to say, I want to pull out of my contract, and the contracting company would be responsible for providing us a replacement. The problem is, we don't just accept anybody. We're going to go through the same process that we would do if it was a direct hire through interviewing and bedding that person.
So we venom to and har, not we don't har, but we're, we're running through the same situation we run through a regular employee?
Absolutely, yep.
And so, and here we're talking about the consultants guarantee their hours if they're quarantined at home, so if they spend two out, two weeks at home, we're going to pay them 70 hours?
If they're providing the services, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a contract for approved for speech language services for an amount of $110,682.60. Budget FY '22 unrestricted operating budget.
So moved. Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So the next contract that I'm presenting to you on the list is Chesapeake Speech. This contract is in the amount of $282,450. It is being pulled from a combination of the unrestricted and restricted operating budgets. This is actually a contract for three speech pathologists. One, and I know, Mrs. Bennett, you had this question. One of the speech pathologists would be responsible for covering Stevensville Middle School as well as Ken Island High School, and that would be a four-day-a-week assignment. So it comes out to be 28 hours a week. The other person would be responsible for four days a week at Kennard and Queen Anne's High School, and that would also be 28 hours per week. And then the final person would cover Mata Peak Elementary School and Mata Peak Middle School, and that would be for 35 hours per week. This contract is a little bit different because it is a local company, so one of the things that we do love about this particular company is we are employing local speech pathologists. Unfortunately, they are still already part of that contract agency, so, you know, they don't belong to us.
So number five up there, for the sum of, and it's item five, it says that they're going to be compensated if we have a delay opening. If they had scheduled hours in the morning, we would still pay them if they missed their AM as a contractor?
Yes, and I will tell you that for the most part, these contractors have plenty of paperwork to do, so even if we're delayed, they're not sitting at home doing nothing. Oftentimes, they come in and they're still working on Medicaid billing or logs or, you know, prepping for their sessions, so.
Is this one of the ones where they can do 25% for planning and 75% for the actual, doing the services?
They are compensated for direct and indirect services, yes.
Okay, so that would just be part of their 25%, and they would not get paid for the, in service in the morning?
So...
Wouldn't like to be double-dipping?
No, it's not double-dipping. So, for example, if they're out for a day, they are required to make up those services. There may be a day when they have four hours of direct service scheduled, but because they missed the day before and they also had four hours, they now have to kind of shove their indirect services over to the day that, you know, maybe they had a delay or something along those lines, and they are responsible for making up the missed services.
Okay, thank you. And then last question, and I'm three, the board agrees to invite the contractors to any relevant board professional development activities. So is that free of charge on there, or are we incurring any cost at all for providing them these services?
So those days are built into the contract, so we structure the contract in such a way that they are included in those professional development days, and the reason being because, you know, we do things the way the Queen Anne's way, which is really in alignment with the way that the federal government wants us to do things in terms of paperwork and billing and whatnot. But at the same time, there are little, you know, minutia that might be different, there may be updates that we want them to be aware of, and we all want to be doing it the same, whether you're a contractor, whether you're a direct hire. So we really see the value and importance in them participating in the same professional development that our staff are participating in, so we're really having that continuity of care across the board.
So on the PD days, are they being paid, or are they just participating in the PD days?
They are being paid for their time.
So they're working under the same, which is our teachers will be working under and things of that nature?
Yes, I mean, we are asking them to come so that we can ensure that their quality of delivery is up to par.
Okay, I have Chesapeake Speech, apparently services for the amount of $282,450, FY ' '22 unrestricted and restricted operating budget.
So moved, second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next contract that I bring before you is for Watts Consulting, and this is an occupational therapy service for our infants and toddlers population in the amount of $82,536, again, from unrestricted and restricted operating budget. This is for a total of 90.5 hours per month, and again, this is limited to our infant and toddler population.
How many infants do we have in the program?
I think the last I checked, it was hovering around 58, but that number is a fluctuating number every day, and actually, many of our surrounding districts have seen a pretty high spike in that, and, you know, we're starting to see that increase as well. So a lot of people are kind of coming out.
Smith, isn't that just North County? The 58? I thought that there was at least 100 in the program.
In infants and toddlers?
Mm-hmm.
I would have to double-check the number.
Yeah, where did we hear that number?
For some reason, I thought it was much higher.
It might be higher. Perhaps I'm misquoting it.
Or maybe we're hearing an old number, so, yeah, I remember it being much more than that.
I can get you the exact number.
Yeah, to know, thank you.
I work with a nurse that does the home assessments, I think she's busy.
Yes, and getting busier.
So is that what the program is, is they travel out and just visit the homes and do...
It is, it's intended to be a home-based, kind of that natural environment service delivery model, so it's a lot of coaching and training parents, just as much as it is providing direct services to students, or to children, really, at that age. And that is birth, it can go all the way up to four and kind of starting to exit out between four and five.
But they're registered in our school system?
Yes.
When you go out to talk to parents, it's, those children are, or students are in our system.
They're in our system, correct.
The premise is early intervention.
Right.
So, I mean, they may move out of the county before they ever get to our school system, but another school system still does an infant and toddler program. So when my daughter was born, they came into the assessment, she got OTPT speech, she got it all at home until the three-year-old program started. The earlier you get to them, the development is better.
Right, but I guess my question is, they're enrolled as far as our count, student count?
So not until they're school age. Once they become the age that they would count as a school-age student, so like, for example, we do have a three, like, if you're three years old, you can be enrolled as a three-year-old student, but if you are still receiving home services, you are still part of the infant and toddler count that we submit, but you're not part of the school system count.
And for funding reasons, it's really a K-12, so even the pre-K-4 students...
That's right, that's right, that's what I'm going.
None of these students are in our count?
That's why there's still enrollment, when you see enrollment numbers out there, the variation is usually your pre-K-3, 4 program, that makes it a variation of...
And this infant and toddler program?
Right.
Yeah, they're not in there.
And they do, they count for our special education count, so we do get special education funding for the infant and toddler program.
Okay.
I will tell you, there's a very big difference between what we receive for infant and toddler funding versus our school-age services. However, they are making leaps and bounds in that area as well.
About time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a Watts Consulting for a tune of $82,536, FY '22 unrestricted and restricted operating budget.
So moved, second.
The second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next contract is for Wendy Carpenter, who is also in occupational therapy. Wendy provides occupational therapy to our school-age population, she covers the southern schools in the county, so she covers, you know, pretty much Graysonville South. She does do some assessments and, you know, services when needed north of Graysonville, but primarily, that is her jurisdiction that she covers. The contract is in the amount of $96,525, and again, this does come from restricted and the unrestricted budget.
And this contract is directly with her?
It is. It is her company, and it is...
Oh, her, okay.
That's what she calls her company.
Okay, it's her company, so she works on it. So we don't have any issues with fight or any other stuff, any things we have to pay?
She takes, that's all, yep.
Wendy Carpenter contract for a tune of $96,525, FY '22 restricted and unrestricted operating budget.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And the last contract that I have for you is for CompuClaim, which is our medical assistance billing program. So last year, we moved from paper billing over to CompuClaim, so now we're able to electronically file logs and bill with the state and the federal government to reclaim any funding that we are entitled through Medicaid assistance funding. The platform is at the cost of $25,000, and it is funded through the restricted operating budget.
Is this a competitive bid? Do we have other companies that do medical billing?
We did do an RFP when we secured this. I don't know that we were able to secure three competing companies, I think we were only able to secure two at the time of the bid. It's still relatively new, and we did compare it to other districts on the shore that are also using electronic billing, and they too have gone with CompuClaim.
But how many, how many, the Medicaid, is that just for all of our staff, is it for...
No, this is for students that are...
For the special...
It's for students receiving services like OTPT, hands-on, speech hearing.
Right, so how many claims are we talking in a month? Do you know on average how many times, how many claims we're making?
Yes.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
There's a lot.
It's a lot. So for any, if a child is eligible and they have medical assistance coverage, any direct service that is a medical service that is provided in the educational setting can be billed, so speech therapy services, each service.
It's each bill?
It's based on the IAP, so whatever the educational team determines is appropriate for that student to make success, those services translate to billable services for MA. So if they have OTPT speech, you bill for all of those.
Right, but I mean, are you billing every time that the service is given? Are you billing once a month? Are you billing weekly?
Every time that the service is, every time the service is given, a log is recorded, and then it is sent in as a bill.
Okay, thanks.
Reimburseable is essentially what we do.
Yes, and we do have annual audits where they come in and review to ensure that the services are being provided and that they are up to snuff with their expectations, and if they're not, then we do have to pay it back.
Well, they've just had one, right? This was their first year? Okay, great.
Oh, we, no, we've had these...
Right, for the paper, oh, was, who did the paper before? Was that in-house, or was that...
It's always, it's all in-house, we do have a medical assistance biller who is responsible for doing that, but the audits have been for years, it's just it was paper-based before, and now it's so much easier with the electronic. It has allowed us to recoup additional funds as well because there are fewer things that are missed, and we can resubmit bills that were not applicable at one time because perhaps the child wasn't covered, and now they are, and we can rebill, and the system automatically does that.
Right, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, computer claim platform, impact fee of $25,000 out of FY '22 restricted operating budget.
So moved, second.
The second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you for allowing me to skip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am here this evening on behalf of Amy Cummings, who is our out-of-school-time coordinator, and I want to thank her for her hard work in putting this contract together. This evening, we're asking approval of a contract with Alphabet Education to provide our before-and-after care services to the students of Queen Anne's County Public Schools. This is a one-year contract, it has a renewal option for three years in one-year increments. This recommendation is being made after an RFP process. They received two submissions to that RFP. The local management board as a group reviewed those submissions and made a recommendation for the successful group, which is Alphabet. This is a revenue source for the fiscal year 2022 operating budget, the amount is to be determined. That is based on the number of locations that Alphabet is able to staff, that is based on the number of days that they're able to provide service, and it also depends on whether or not they opt to do summer programs next year.
So basically, students or family members or staff members pay for the service?
That's correct.
So is it any negative cost to this board?
No. At this point, the only, the only cost essentially would be facilities, and they are recouped with the cost of the contract.
So when we say open revenue, if it's 1,000 students or 100, it's pro-rated, and also, I don't remember, we actually had trouble finding staff, didn't they, to do this? So, I mean, it wasn't offered, I mean, some people were very disappointed because it wasn't around, not that it's anybody's fault, but if you can't have staff, you don't have a program.
That's correct.
Is it our only before-and-after program that we offer, is through Alphabet?
It's only, it's also out-of-school days, so on days that are planned.
Right, but I mean, is this the only, are there any other before-and-after programs that go on?
Yes, so we do have our internal PFY program that is also an after-school program, but that is part of the school's offering, this is an outside before-and-after care service.
It comes into our schools.
Correct. They utilize our facilities.
You've got the building use and fees, and they say Exhibit B, and I know that we're reviewing that policy.
Yes.
What is the building fees that they're paying per building?
So they pay $500 a month, they pay $750 if they're combining locations. So if we have two buildings that are close to one another, let's say Bayside Elementary School and Ken Island Elementary School, if they choose to only run one location and have all of the students from those two schools go to one, then it's a $750 fee.
Okay, so it's not two different things, so I was reading, I was thinking they were paying a building use fee, and on top of that, the 500 a month, but you're saying they're just paying 500 a month?
Correct, it's 500 a month. Where the additional fees come in, if it's a day that we are not in the buildings, but they are utilizing services, then we also charge them for HVAC as well as custodial services that are necessary.
And the 500 a month is for, so it's five days a week in the morning, and it's five days a week in the afternoon, of course, with the out-of-school days...
Depends on our schedule, but yes, they have the option to do before-school care starting at 6:30 in the morning until schooltime, and then from 3:30 in the afternoon until 6:00 PM.
So it's both a benefit to our staff if they have children there, and it's a benefit to the public if they're working, and students can be dropped off and picked up at a later time?
Yes.
There's also in the, what section is it? The building use and fees, the next page over there, we're talking about Alphabet will agree to accept subsidies. What subsidies would that be, and who would be paying those subsidies?
So I believe those are federal subsidies, so if there is an allotment to a family to assist with the cost.
Before-and-after care.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The morning wouldn't be a problem, but the evening, if it's 6 o'clock and you're shutting down, and some parent's running, stuck on the bridge, what happens then?
That's the Alphabet staff, and they have a protocol for that, and honestly, I don't know that it's covered in the contractor if we ask for that information, but sometimes with the before-and-after care, there is an additional cost that they'll charge the parents, but that is...
But, I mean, we have janitors or some security there, but they're going to stay there until the last client or student leaves, and then that's their responsibility.
It is their responsibility, correct.
I have a proposal contract for Alphabet Education. It is revenue to be determined, basically because it's a WASH, it's a pay as you pay, people using will be paying for it, and then we will, depending on how many schools they utilize, that's what the revenue, which is pretty much offsetting our cost. And we've got an FY '22 operating budget, but I think it's one of those things where you see revenue and expenses that should be a zero.
Second.
Third and second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, and thank you for accommodating that.
Oh, thank you for waiting. Okay. Our future meetings, and then next week, we will meet again Wednesday, which is our regular work session, at, our meeting will be at 4, at 5 o'clock, our closed session will be at 4 if necessary. Any further business? Motion to go in exactly closed.
Pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move for the board to meet in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointed employees over whom this public body has jurisdiction and to perform an administrative function.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're going to go in closed session, thank you.